Um, sorry for the delay, but we had to take some legal advice, which I think is still happening. Um, so we're just going to get on with things as they are. So I'll ask Abbie to go through the housekeeping for you.
Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards at the Assembly Pointers at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, if the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Abbie. Apologies for absence please. Sorry. Right, I'll ask each member to interview themselves please, starting with you Harry.
That Mary Lee, councillor for Darnall Ward.
Nikki Beaufield, councillor for Firth Park Ward.
Hello Janet Riddler, councillor for Stockbridge and Upadon.
Good afternoon, Tony Downing, councillor for Mosborough.
Hello, Mark Whittaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Upadon as well, thank you.
Good afternoon all, councillor Galway whether all for Shagun and Brightside Ward.
Good afternoon, Marion Elliott, councillor for Gleanis Valley.
Henry Nottead, councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
Glynnis Chapman, councillor for Mosborough Ward.
Good afternoon, Andrew Sanger, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Cliff Woodcraft, also a councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Thank you Amber, Abbie.
Thank you Chair. Um, we have received apologies for absence from councillor Mike Chaplin and councillor Mary Lee is acting as substitute, thank you.
We don't think have anything to exclude the public or the press, no, thank you. As members, any declaration of interest, Tony?
Yeah, one or two of us on the committee actually know one of the people involved with the Springfield Road, uh, application. Are we okay to remain at the meeting, thank you.
I think if you, if you declare and you feel that there's not, it's not a personal relationship, you just know them, then I think it'll be alright, but I think if it's a personal relationship, you would need to leave the meeting.
No, it's non-personal.
Andy?
Thanks Chair, I will declare the same, the same, the same person that I, I, you know, we've worked together in terms of council work, but in absolutely any other capacity.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah Chair, A B, a personal friend of mine.
Item five, minutes of previous meeting. I'll ask Abbie to come in here because there was a problem with the minutes.
Thank you Chair. At the last meeting, we approved the minutes of the meeting on the 19th of August. Following that approval, um, it was brought to my attention that councillor Andrew Sanger had been missed off the attendance list. So as the minutes have been approved as a true and correct record, they can't be amended, but we can note councillor Sanger's attendance and amend the list of attendees, so.
Yep, are we all right with that?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. So it's a previous meeting, um, are we all right with those? Yep, thank you very much. Site visits, they will be sent out and with people's diaries. Item seven, conservation area reviews for boundary change. Name changes to the city centre and Kellam Island conservation areas in Sheffield. Page seventeen, I was. People speaking both, no? Yeah, thank you, it's over to you.
Okay, thank you, afternoon everybody, I'm Ashada Deshpande, I manage the design conservation and trees team. And with my colleague Neil Bauer, we are here to present this item to committee. I will, um, take you through, um, just, just a bit of background and the purpose of this exercise before we come on to the recommendations. So, um, slide there, um, indicates the, the purpose of the exercise, which is reviewing existing conservation areas, we have thirty-five in the city. And, uh, for the local authority, there is a, a requirement to review these on a regular basis. We received, we secured funding from M H C L G and Historic England to review six of, um, these existing conservation areas. We set out a certain criteria when we bid to the funders. And one of the criteria was that these existing conservation areas did not have an appraisal or a management plan. We are working very closely with Historic England throughout this and M H C L G, who are the other joint funders. We are in phase one of this exercise, looking at city centre and Kellam Island, which is the subject of the recommendations today. We, um, uh, and the next phase will be Ranmore, Endcliff, Oaks Park and Norton. So that, and we had come to the planning committee in May about, um, the, the, this, this project to give you, the committee, a bit of information about the project. So this is just an overview on, um, where we are. In terms of phase one, very specifically, um, we, um, and phase one, which is Kellam and city centre, um, in terms of public consultation, again, while reviewing existing conservation areas, there is no statutory requirement on the local planning authority to consult. However, uh, we, um, decided that, um, we needed to put forward a bespoke consultation plan. And this was working with Historic England as a joint client, um, to, um, kind of take it as a best practice. We started in January, uh, on phase one. And since the start of this exercise, we have consulted, um, regularly with stakeholders to gather their views proactively so they can be tested and responded to. The consultation was done in a number of, um, uh, kind of, uh, in, in, I mean, very many ways, online, in person, where officers were, uh, out there, uh, with display boards. And, um, we had a bookable dropping session in the town hall, uh, just so that we gather everybody's views. The report goes into the detail of the representations received. Comments are summarised, uh, for the purpose of this committee. And all comments have been considered and implemented where, uh, they, they were considered appropriate. Uh, and amendments made to the appraisals and the boundary changes, which we will come on to, um, as we go through the presentation. So with that, I hand you over to my colleague to go through, um, the rest of the report.
Thank you. So this slide just touches a bit more on how and why. And the slide looks at the methodology and outcome, um, following the Historic England best practice. So the, the reasons for appraisals essentially are to, um, create an agreed starting point in terms of planning decisions. The National Planning Policy Framework requires that applicants describe the significance of any heritage assets whilst they're making an application through a heritage statement. The National Planning Policy Framework also asks local planning authorities to assess the particular significance of any heritage asset affected. So essentially, as I say, an agreed starting point and applicants are able to include information from the appraisal in, in their application. And, uh, officers are able to use, uh, the same baseline data to make recommendations and take decisions. Just touched on the appraisal methodology there, which is included in the Historic England best practice. And some of the things that the consultants we engage to undertake the work in terms of, um, creating that baseline data, uh, the in-depth survey and research, local history studies, planning history, going out, looking at the sites, doing visual surveys of the conservation areas, assessment of key features. Key features can include buildings, spaces, views, all of those types of things which can contribute to special character and appearance. And we've chosen to approach a, a digital format to display that information for people to, to use. I suppose the, the key point to make is that it brings together a single place to, to create an understanding of, of what creates the special, uh, interest, that character and appearance. And the output will be, uh, better quality, quicker, uh, and more consistent decision-making as part of that. In undertaking the appraisals, um, there's a, a boundary review process as well. There is a requirement within legislation to undertake, uh, reviews of conservation area boundaries from time to time. So as part of the, the process, this was included. And I've just included there the methodology for doing that and the things that the consultants looked at in terms of their recommendations. So the first point there is, is there sufficient architectural or historic interest to warrant investigation in, in, in the area? And this is quite an important point, is, is the special interest experienced through its character and appearance? So how is that experienced in an area? How does that translate in terms of its character and appearance? And part of the, the same criteria was, is this same as the existing conservation area which is being reviewed part of this project? Or is it distinct, is it part of a separate character? Is it something which should be considered separately? And is it desirable for the character and appearance, um, to be preserved or enhanced? Which is the, the point enshrined in, uh, legislation. So several areas, say at the bottom of the slide, in the proximity of the conservation areas that were being considered, i.e. the city centre and Kellam Island, were considered in light of the above. And if members of committee refer to pages thirty-nine and forty of, of the committee report, you'll see the conservation areas, the proposed extensions and also the areas which were also proposed and considered as parts of this process but not proposed to be adopted. So there, in terms of that boundary review methodology, there, there are other important things to consider kind of interwoven within that. So National Planning Policy again says that in considering boundaries, we, we mustn't devalue the concept of, of conservation. We mustn't include areas which aren't worthy, don't have special interest. And I suppose another point to make in terms of, of why we do this is being within a conservation area can also potentially open up other opportunities. It does put it at the heart of, of decision-making in terms of putting heritage, um, front and centre. And potentially it also opens up opportunities for funding. There are certain funding streams which look at, um, you know, criteria based in terms of are, are buildings listed, are they within a conservation area? So, um, that does, uh, you know, bring something in terms, in terms of considerations. So in terms of what has come out of that process of, of boundary changes, within the city centre, it's proposed to add Castle Gate, West Street and Millennium Galleries to the existing conservation area. They're shown in blue on the slide there on the left. The red portion is, uh, a building in St Paul's Place where, uh, essentially the boundary, the, the previous conservation area boundary ran through the middle of a building, it didn't make sense. So in order to rationalise that, the boundary was drawn around the building. In terms of Kellam Island, I've also referenced there a proposal within the report to rename, um, the conservation area, Kellam Island and Neepsend Conservation Area. There's the inclusion of Moorfield Flats and Yard Street, uh, the Coal Drops along Wilson Street and an area of Neepsend along Burton Road, Wootton Road and Bradwell Road. Again, the additions, the only additions for, for Kellam Island and they're in, in blue in relation to the existing conservation area boundary, which is in red. The next slides just show some of the additions, um, proposed additions to the conservation areas. So on the top left is Devonshire Green, which is part, proposed to be part of the West Street, uh, character area. Bottom right is the Old Town Hall, which is part of the Castle Gate character area that's been identified. And again, just referring back to the point I was making in terms of opportunities, um, potential funding. You know, buildings like the Old Town Hall are, are significant heritage assets which might worthy consideration around some of that. Uh, in terms of Kellam Island and Neepsend, top left is a Coal Drops, which is part of the proposed Neepsend character area. And bottom, bottom right was a Moorfield Flats that I referenced, which is part of the Kellam character area.
So next steps, um, uh, the, the next steps obviously, um, uh, would be, um, that the, uh, depending on the, the kind of committee's, uh, consideration today, that boundaries for phase one, which is city centre and Kellam, uh, Kellam and Neepsend conservation area, they come into effect as soon as the committee make the decision. And those areas get the immediate protection that they need. The draft management plans, uh, are, uh, are produced, uh, as the next step for those entire areas to include the new extensions, policies which will ensure protection, uh, will be embedded within those management plans. There will be an opportunity for, uh, feedback on the draft management plans at a public meeting. And, uh, obviously, uh, and hopefully opportunities for funding will be opened up, um, as part of those, um, discussions. Management plans will be brought to a future planning committee, um, uh, again to gain the committee's, uh, kind of, uh, approval. And that is, that is phase one. So with, with the management plans, phase one is wrapped up and work on phase two begins, which is a similar, uh, process. The first would be appraisals for Ranmore, Endcliff, Norton and Oaks. Appraisals and boundary, uh, reviews. And then the part B of that would be management plan. So that will be next year, uh, spring twenty twenty-six, um, thank you.
Thank you, we have two speakers, um, first being Robbie, please Robbie Hughes. You have five minutes Robbie, thank you.
Thank you Chair. So I'm speaking today on behalf of Hallowshire Historic Buildings, the Victorian Society South Yorkshire, Sheffield Conservation Advisory Group and the Castle Gate Partnership. Six years ago, consultation on Castle Gate was abruptly cancelled. Now a larger area is recommended for designation using funds bid for and won by a planning team under new leadership. By any measure, this is progress and a testament to the dedication of officers. We must not lose sight of that. We also thank them for a detailed consultation process, which we look forward to continuing as the management plans are developed. Even so, there is widespread and profound disappointment that after huge voluntary effort by stakeholders to develop proposals collaboratively, the outcome is little different to the council's pre-consultation report. Many stakeholder suggestions are dismissed for less than convincing reasons. This disappointment is felt by all the organisations for which I speak, as well as ward councillors and the Member of Parliament for Sheffield Central. A significant opportunity is missed by not designating the Wicker and Victoria Keys. I draw members' attention to the detailed case for designating the Wicker at Appendix B (2D). This consultation feedback was originally not sent to members, so I'm grateful to officers for attaching it to the agenda laid last week at my request. Officers acknowledge the historic significance of both the Wicker and Victoria Keys, but claim their character is distinct from the city centre conservation area. This is strongly disputed. The Wicker document lays out clear historical connections across multiple themes and eras with the adjacent Castle Gate area, which officers do not consider distinct from the city centre. These areas urgently need designation to avoid a repeat of the decay and destruction caused by the six-year delay in Castle Gate. This also supports integration and access to resources in an area strongly related to and used by black and minoritised ethnic communities and their businesses and serving nearby areas of deprivation. Officers also rejected smaller additions suggested by stakeholders, insisting that each such area must individually justify designation. This is wrong. Designation is of an area as a whole and National Planning Policy Framework paragraphs two one nine and two two O make it abundantly clear that there will be buildings in conservation areas that do not contribute and even some that are negative. This is also Historic England's advice. Otherwise, conservation areas become a Swiss cheese of holes with less positive sites cut out. There is a large hole around Westfield Terrace, for example, exactly where unsympathetic development could do the greatest harm. It contains twentieth and twenty-first century buildings which are of merit, others less good, could easily be replaced by something worse. It also contains the listed portico of the former Mount Zion Congregational Chapel, where formerly enslaved African-American Moses Roper made campaigning speeches. Another hole at Snig Hill contains early council housing and corporation buildings and pioneering music venue The Black Swan, where The Clash first performed in public. These are all the heritage of ordinary people which in a diverse city should be celebrated. We believe the real issue is of limited resources. The elastic will stretch as far as Castle Gate, but extend it further and it may snap. Therefore, these are our requests to members. Approve without delay the designation of all areas recommended by officers in their largely very commendable report. And the name change, correct to keep the word industrial. Sheffield should be proud that Kellam Island was one of the country's first industrial conservation areas and the name must continue to show this. Second, ask officers if they will quantify the resource that would be needed to appraise and if appropriate, designate all extensions proposed by stakeholders. And following that, thirdly and lastly, recommend to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee that they urgently seek the required resources to enable this work to be carried out in the very near future. And I would again like to close by thanking officers. This is a good outcome, it just, it could be a better one and that's what we would like to seek together.
Thank you Robbie. Our next speaker is councillor Douglas Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. So for the record, yeah councillor Douglas Johnson, uh, member for City Ward, but also, um, an active member of the Castle Gate Partnership. And the reason I want to speak is because, actually this is very good news on the face of it, extending the conservation areas to cover Castle Gate, um, is something that, you know, between us, we've all wanted to do for many years. Officers previously did a huge amount of work repairing a detailed, um, conservation appraisal for the area until it was notoriously cancelled by a certain cabinet member back in twenty eighteen on the day the consultation was to go live. And so it is, it is good to see that going here. Robins, um, said really eloquently how this is good, but it could go further. There's a particular area of, um, dispute around the Wicker there. And it's not so much the content of that, there are good reasons why the Wicker should be included. And as you said, as Robin said, you've had a paper circulated, but it wasn't included in the original papers. So it didn't get the due publication that it should have done. And that's a bit regrettable because it's worth paying a lot of attention to the Wicker area. But I think the thing that's, you know, is a particular concern towards in the way that we approached it is that whilst the consultation, there were some really, really good consultation sessions, involving lots of members who actually know their stuff about the city and the history of the city. Those, those, those findings and all the discussion that came out of there is not reflected in this proposal. And I think really frankly, we have a, an issue where we have some external consultants, with, uh, probably a view of heritage from York, I don't want to say too dismissively of them, but I do think it's a bit of an ivory tower. And the argument that we put forward in those sessions was that, um, you might have academic knowledge from York and understand what historic means and it's the definition of historic that's key here. But there are also people in Sheffield who know, um, what the history of Sheffield is. And now understand how that relates to people, how it's been relating to people over the centuries. And I mean literally centuries here because the interest of the castle at the moment is, the castle was at the, the very centre point, controlling the transport in and out of the city. And that's why the Wicker is important. The Wicker is, um, it is the historic environment, the road layout is still there, there's lots of interesting heritage buildings, but the point is it's a gateway. It's that really key straight line from the Ladies Bridge, the historic crossing of the river that the castle controlled, out to the Wicker Arches, the first railway coming in, parallel to the canal, that was a groundbreaking or water breaking, um, um, effort to bring, um, uh, commerce into the city. It's the centre of the roads, it's even the, the endpoint of the Five Weirs Walk. And with that transport hub, and this is the very origin of Sheffield. Remember the market started, um, at, at the castle, um, because of the castle there, but because people could get things in, um, and out of the city. It's the central commerce and of course, reflecting on to what the Wicker is now. And, and personally, I felt that there was a rather sniffy attitude towards, um, the Wicker because looking a bit shabby. But of course, the Wicker is now characterised by, um, shops, um, selling things from all over the world. It's characterised by, you know, African food shops, African hairdressers, um, Asian food. And of course, these are things that are brought in and it's the history of importing things. It's the history of, um, the gateway to the world. And that's why its historic link is there. Those, those buildings are there, you can still see the old, um, Horse Hospital attached, the Hancock and Land buildings where they were transporting things, you know, and horses, um, from the railway. Again, goods coming in and out, all of this. Now, people put in a lot of thought to this. I'd just like to suggest that the committee needs to think about, um, as Robin said, it would be great if there's further review of the Wicker area and if that can be done in a timely way. And that's a possibility, probably with the steer of the committee because there is some funding there. We have got retain consultants, they've got scope for doing another four conservation areas. They could be asked to do a further piece of work here. Or alternatively, the committee might want a bit more time to think about that and ask for a fuller report, uh, to come back that really addresses that last minute and really important addition that you've only had in the last couple of days. And that's, uh, Robin's paper which expresses that. Finally, I just want to say, um, you've got in your papers, um, a completely redacted version and only partial, uh, response from the Castle Gate Partnership. Now, I just have to stress that, um, it's on page thirty-three of your papers there. It's largely redacted, so you don't know who's behind this. But actually, if you'd seen the full version, which I've got here, you will see the list of the people who are the most engaged people in the city about the whole aspect of regeneration of this area. I, I don't really want to see those people's views dismissed in this way. Because I know that personally, a lot of people have put in a lot of effort because they really care about the place. And also in terms of the regeneration of the city, Castle Gate is really important. The castle site is there, there's the levelling money, but the whole area around the Wicker, would really benefit from being at a conservation area, the cost of the benefits there. That's absolutely fine, I'll, I'll finish there, thank you.
Do the officers wish to come back or anything there? Yeah?
Thank you Chair. I think, um, largely the, 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 the comments made touch on some of the things I touched on in, in my bit of the, the presentation, if I can go back. I suppose the question about re- reviewing the Wicker as a conservation area comes back to the point that actually Ashada, uh, mentioned in terms of, um, the funding that we sought, was to review existing conservation areas. And the existing conservation areas at hand in this first phase are the city centre and Kellam Island. And that is to look at the existing boundaries. That funding doesn't extend to assessing and designating new, uh, independent conservation areas as part of that. But also to touch on, uh, the, the information which was provided within the report in terms of the historic interest of, um, the Wicker. Just going back to this slide that I touched on in terms of, um, sufficient architectural or historic interest in terms of that boundary review methodology. You know, I, I don't think we dispute that there's. I don't think we dispute that there's, you know, historic interest in these areas, but the methodology which was set out, and again, is part of best practice, is how is that special interest experienced, how does it translate itself into the character and appearance? And I think, you know, with the Wicker, any special interest which exists, we do feel is distinct from Castle Gate, and that the elements of historic interest which have been identified have been largely affected by later phases of development, which may include some of that special interest, which is, you know, worthy of consideration at some point. But as I kind of refer back to, this project is specifically about existing conservation areas and their review. Touching on the point around including areas of no or limited or negative interest within conservation areas, that's correct, Historic England guidance, you know, does suggest that. But the way I would interpret that is that when you when you look at conservation areas designated a conservation area, it will be inevitable that there will be areas within that area which aren't of as much interest as the prevailing character, and that's where there's the opportunity for enhancement. I don't think that guidance is suggesting that if there are areas on the edge of a conservation area which don't display that special interest, that you would still draw the boundary round them. It's, I think it's, it would be sensible to not include those areas, or as we have done in terms of the boundary review with the city centre, excluded areas which we don't feel are part of that special interest, to make sure that the boundary is robust, again, going back to National Planning Policy requirements, which say we shouldn't devalue conservation by including areas which aren't worthy of that special interest.
Thank you, Liam. We'll move to members' questions.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I'm struggling quite a lot on this, I mean, I think I really welcome the fact that Castle Gate is to be included, but, you know, just having heard the two representations from the public, I'm just interested in pursuing this point about firstly, the relationship between the castle, Ladies Bridge and the Wicker, on one hand, but also the historic linking terms of, in terms of Victoria Keys, because, you know, as Castle, as the Castle Gate site gets opened up and the exciting work that's going on there, you know, the people will start to understand the 19th century transport links, maybe we've just heard about the 13th century's transport links, but the 19th century transport links in terms of the canal and the sighting of Victoria Station, and clearly it was a, whatever it was, a 1960s decision to close Victoria Station, but, you know, the early transport links.
Question.
So the question is, why is now not the right time to include either Wicker or Victoria Keys? I accept the resources argument, but if we don't review it now, when will we, when would we come back to it, is the question.
Okay, thank you. So Chair, just going back to the purpose of this exercise is, we are reviewing existing designations, so existing conservation areas, city centre and Calum. There is a degree of boundary, kind of ratification, checking whether the boundaries are correct, which is what we have been through, we have been through it very comprehensively. As put out in the committee report, there is a response provided, we are not disagreeing that there is heritage, and there are, there will be so many other areas where there is historic interest, which are adjacent to established conservation areas. In Sheffield, it happens where conservation areas are abutting each other, Encliff and Ranmore, Furness Hill and Wellmeadow, they are very, in very close proximity to each other, but they are their individual conservation areas because they have specific historic interest. So I think this, in terms of when will we answer this question, as part of this exercise, we have answered this question that the view is that Wicker, Victoria Keys, they need to be looked at separately. When can we come round to that? Again, we need to finish this exercise, this project, over the next couple of years. And so at this point, it is very difficult to answer that question, but we will come round to it as soon as is possible in the next kind of three, three years, hopefully, in terms of having finished this project.
Thanks, Chair, I'll come back as a comment later, once I've been asked a question.
Any further questions? Maryam.
Just a simple question, really, there's a lot of reference to the appraisal, and sorry if this is obvious and it is somewhere, I haven't seen it, I know there is some reference to it being fluid and not a static PDF. Is that somewhere, has it been made available to us?
The appraisals, both are on the council's website, they are linked with the council's main webpage. If we had possibility, we could jump onto the council's webpage and show you then, but they are digital format, they are something which, again, is not a static format, it's not a PDF, it's a webpage essentially.
Okay, I mean, I guess it would have been useful to have a link to that to sort of further educate us about this. Can I just ask one more question as well? Just so following up on councillor Sangar's point, so you said that the potential review of the Wicker and Victoria Keys could happen, you know, in three years or something, and obviously the funding doesn't extend to this. Is it possible for us as a committee to request it to happen sooner by way of condition or something like that?
Richard.
Thank you, Chair. It would be possible for the committee to note a request to bring forward work that would be handled through another committee, suggestion was that the TRC would bring that work forward. It wouldn't be within this committee's remit so as to compel or require that work to be carried out, but it could be noted as an item by this committee.
So could that be noted as a formal recommendation or something like that?
It could be.
Not binding?
Yeah, it could be noted as a request of this committee, that it be a piece of work that's looked at by the TRC committee.
Any more questions? Sorry, Mr Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, in terms of what Robin referred to as Swiss cheese, there's one area that's marked out on page 39 as a proposed area that wasn't included, which is number eight, that is currently bordered to the east by the existing conservation area, and will be bordered to the north, west and south by the proposed area, to the effect that it's more or less entirely surrounded by conservation area. I'm kind of struggling to see how any development in that section wouldn't have the opportunity to either enhance or protect the character of the area, or by not being included, be to the detriment of the area. Would it not have been simpler to just include that?
Thank you. I think that goes back to the point that areas must display that special character, special interest, character and appearance that is desirable to preserve and enhance, and that not to devalue the concept of conservation by including it, so it's been assessed as not having that special interest, so the boundary has been drawn round it. Of course, the setting of a conservation area is a material consideration in terms of any development affecting the setting of a conservation area.
You think that takes proper account of the guidance from Historic England, that it can contain areas that, you know, in effect, negative to the character of the area?
I think it does, because I don't think the intention is that when you're doing a boundary view, that you include negative areas, it's saying that within a conservation area, particularly if you've got a large conservation area, there will undoubtedly be areas which don't add to the special interest, but it would be impossible to draw a boundary which kind of takes, or Swiss hole, you know, holes in cheese as kind of Robin refers to, and that that's why there's a, you know, that requirement within legislation to preserve special interest or enhance where there are opportunities to do so. But on where we've got an opportunity for a boundary view, where an area doesn't meet the tests of special interest of that methodology that I went through, you wouldn't include it, because there's no reason to do it, and the setting of a conservation area is a material consideration.
Okay. Any more questions? Comments? Tony, you're on first.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, picking up on what councillor Sangar said, I mean, three years is a long time, but I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into doing all this, and thank you for your efforts with all this. I just think that maybe perhaps somewhere down the line, this part of, you know, the Wicker and that area could be at some point soon, sooner, rather than later included into the, into the conservation area. Thank you.
Got it?
Thank you, Chair. And speaking now with my sort of Heritage Champion hat on, and also as a member of the Castle Gate Partnership and the Castle Gate Board, I would like to just sort of put on record the fact that I think that the planning department have done an excellent job of driving this review forward, as has been noted earlier, that, you know, after what was quite a significant delay, I think that this is a really positive reflection of how the council, Historic England and other stakeholders are working together, really to put heritage at the heart of what we do in the council. And obviously, having this revised and revitalised conservation area, I think recognises the importance of heritage buildings, it does invest a degree of protection upon them that we've not had before, and I particularly note that the Old Town Hall, which is a building of concern to many of us, is now going to be, hopefully after this afternoon, included in this new conservation area, and also, as been mentioned, the added opportunities which this will bring. I do note, of course, as well, the constraints and limitations of this project in terms of the funding objectives, and that this did have an effect on what was up for review, and I think it was quite right to push forward with the revised areas that we're looking at today, although that's not to say that the Wicker and Victoria Keys aren't of significance, I think very strongly that they are, and I think that it was, I'm grateful to Hammershire Historic Buildings, Victoria Society for bringing that to the forefront for us. So whilst I acknowledge the fact that the department are going to have quite a lot on their plates in terms of next steps with these conservation areas, I would also echo the request that we deal with the designation of the Wicker and the Victoria Keys area concurrent to this, rather than at the end of this process, which maybe three years may, of course, be longer, and that initial approaches to Historic England, building on the success of this review, are made without delay. So I would, I would echo the desire for this to be expedited and brought forward to TRC committee, so that moving forwards now, we can look without delay at the further designations whilst this is also taking place. Thank you, Chair.
Maryam.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, just following on from that then, I think, you know, there might be a feeling in the room that it is important to get started on the management plans and approve this, but there's been a really strong case made to look at the Wicker and Victoria Keys. So, you know, we have got experts on Sheffield heritage telling us about Sheffield heritage, and I'd like to propose that we note as a request that TRC look at this within 12 months, if that sounds reasonable. So can I formally propose that?
Can we do it 12 months or not, Richard?
Thank you, Chair. I can't say whether or not it could be fulfilled within the 12 months. It's certainly possible to put the request and have it be noted, and have that be something that's decided upon by this committee, but I don't have any information before me that would tell me whether or not that is something that the TRC could deliver within that period. That would, I think, be contingent upon the request being made, it being looked at, and a response being provided on that. But I can't say whether or not, within 12 months, that that is a piece of work that would be delivered.
Would we need to formalise the wording on that now? I mean, could we say something like, put it on the work plan? Would that make sense?
I think that's a sensible way to go about it. In the absence of having any information that would allow me to say that that 12-month period is something that could be committed to by the TRC committee, leaving it open in that way, I think is an advisable way to go.
Andrew.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, I mean, I'd like to second that proposal, I mean, clearly just, for the last three years on TRC, there's a lot, you know, one of the challenges on TRC is that they, they haven't, you know, it's been a challenge with some of the small schemes, but something as significant as this, yeah, it should be done within 12 months. I mean, I've been here 34 years, I'm not going to be here in 34 years' time if we don't designate Wicker and Victoria Keys at some point. I just think you've got to start doing things quickly. But I do want to pick up councillor Riddler's point, and I agree with it, that, you know, we need to acknowledge all the good work in this, you know, this is a good piece of work, the offices are working incredibly hard. And, you know, really positive that the Castle Gate area is going to be included, with lots of excitement that we've seen, you know, in terms of previous reports about what's happening at the Castle Gate site. And we all know that challenges of the Old Town Hall building, so anything that can protect that building. But, yeah, I just want to reiterate the point that, you know, Sheffield lost a lot of its history when it was bombed in the war, and that rapid regeneration that planners and developers did for the best of reasons immediately post-war, meant that they lost some of that history, and as I referred to, in terms of the historic link, in terms of Victoria Keys and Victoria Station, and then now that we're able to talk about that earlier history of Sheffield in terms of the castle and the historic transport links, I'm really keen that we ask TRC to, you know, to come up, get it on their work plan in the next 12 months. And I say that even though I'm very aware that Phase Two will include two conservation areas in my ward, so I accept the challenge, but from a history of Sheffield point of view, we've got to get the city centre area right, and we need people to understand where Sheffield's history was for the whole of that last thousand years. Thanks, Chair.
No one else? We'll move to the vote, and the vote will also include the noting of what you requested.
Yeah.
Asking to put it on the work plan. Okay, so can we, show hands please.
Hold on.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you, we should approve that, thank you very much.
Chair, the next item, I'm afraid I've got to advise that that matter should be deferred due to procedural issue. Thank you, Chair.
Did everybody catch that? Yeah. So can I just take a vote on deferring? Because there are procedural issues here which can't be discussed in an open meeting.
We're talking about Agenda Item 8A. Deferred.
Being deferred because of procedural issues. You got that, Maryam?
So Chair, I mean, I, I think we all accept there's challenges in terms of 8A, but it's just, I think we would just like the legal officer to give us a clearer set of words about why we're deferring 8A when it's coming back. And then colleagues involved in 8B can express their, whether they, they're here or not in terms of 8B. But can we just be very clear why we're deferring 8A as far as we can, given that it's about things we can't talk about? And then tell us when 8A could come back potentially? And then can we move on to 8B Chair?
Vicky?
Thank you Chair. If you would like to expand on that then, I think we'd have to go to closed session. So obviously I'm more than happy to do that. But obviously I'm, I'm advising you now as your legal advisor that the planning authority is not in a position to make a decision, you know, based on all the facts. So we need to defer is my advice.
Chair, so is this deferral a deferral hopefully for one month or is it a deferral for a significant piece of work to be done, which might be three or four months?
I think there's every potential it could be back in a month, but obviously that's no, there's no guarantee. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair. Hello, Mary?
Thank you. Just check, did we finish item seven in its entirety? Have we voted on the whole thing, the name change and everything? Yeah, we just did that in one vote. Okay.
We are going to defer item 8A. Hopefully it will be at the next meeting. The reason it's deferred is because there are some sensitive issues which we weren't made aware of until two o'clock. Hence the meeting's starting late. So we are deferring 8A. Okay. So if any speakers, um, I'm sorry, but we deferred, we had to defer. I'm sorry you had to sit there and waste some of your time. But it will, you will be notified, well not notified, but it will probably come to the next one. You just need to keep an eye on. Would members like a comfort rate? Yes? Yep. Five stroke zero zero five oh one stroke F U L Royal Hotel, Main Road, Duntham, Sheffield. S six six eight F. Andrew, what would you?
Thank you Chair. My name is Andrew Burton. I'm a team leader for the North Area Team in Development Management within the Planning Service. So as Chair's mentioned, the application relates to the former Royal Hotel Public House, which is located on Main Road in the centre of Duntham Village. For anyone not familiar, Duntham is located beyond the north west of the city in Bradfield Parish. The nearest urban districts of the city are Stanington and Locksley, with numerous pubs being located in those areas and in nearby Bradfield. Duntham sits high above the surrounding area in relatively close proximity to the Peak Park and down Flass Reservoir. There's a single main road that passes through the village. Most of the buildings in Duntham front that same road, including the former rail pub. Beyond the line of buildings is predominantly open countryside. The majority of properties that are shown on this slide are the village centre residential. One exception is Duntham Village Hall, which is located on the upper part of this particular slide. This is the photo of the pub as seen from the site frontage. The pub closed approximately 18 months ago, back in February 2024, due to the difficulties the owners were having in maintaining it as a viable pub business. As can be seen, the main residential building is two storeys in height. However, the first floor has been used as a separate residential flat for over 20 years, which limited the pub use to the ground floor only during that period. Also visible on this photo is Ivy Cottage, which is the neighbouring dwelling on one side that projects further forward than the pub. This is where the kitchen facilities for the pub were located, but this too is a separate dwelling, leaving the pub without a kitchen in order to be able to serve food based upon the current circumstances. This is the rear elevation of the former pub, a separate residential property that is located on the upper floor in the rear of the neighbouring dwelling, which is called Ing's Cottage, which is on the, the left hand side of that. The pub's former car park can be seen on the photo, as can the outbuilding that forms part of this application that was used as free small holiday-like units. This is proposed to be converted into a small one-bedroom bungalow as part of this application. This, the rear elevation is seen from a different angle. The entrance into the car park is on the right hand side of the photo, as is a neighbouring bungalow, which is unrelated to this application. The proposal mainly involves conversion work where the amount of new development would be minimal. The proposal to convert the ground floor of the former pub into one three-bedroom flat. The outbuilding to the rear is proposed to be converted from the three holiday-like units into a one-bedroom bungalow as mentioned. The upper floor would continue to remain as a separate flat. The proposals would involve the reconfiguration of the site layout to reduce the size of the car park in order to create some garden amenity space for the existing and proposed residents. Those are indicated on the right hand side of the slide. Five parking spaces would remain. This slide shows the existing proposed floor plans. Again, these just show the proposed reconfiguration work to convert the ground floor of the pub into a three-bedroom dwelling. This does not involve or include the basement. The image also shows the three-bedroom holiday-like rooms converted into the one-bedroom bungalow on the top right hand side of the slide. The changes to the exterior of the buildings would be minimal. To the rear of the pub, two windows would be amalgamated into a larger double window that would have a Juliet balcony. On the outbuilding, two of the doors would be removed and replaced with walling. In addition, some new low-level wall, walling would be erected within the site to enclose the new garden areas. The application received 34 letters of objection and two letters of support. Comments have also been received from Bradfield Parish Council. The main grounds of objection include permanent loss of pub in a village setting and the resulting impacts on the local community. Many comments make reference to the community value that the pub has as a meeting venue for local residents and during seasonal events. It's asserted that the pub had the potential to be operated as a viable pub business under a different operator and didn't make the use of the opportunities that exist through its location, tourism, providing a better food offering and it being on a bush route. Conflict is cited with local and national planning policies which see the retention of pubs as a form of community use, when in rural areas in particular. The two supports derive from customers of the holiday-like units and make reference to their personal experience of the pub, having very few customers during the times that they visited. They also express empathy for the owners who appear to have carried out separate jobs in order to invest money back into the pub and keep it running over a lengthy period of time. The committee report summarises the assessment of the proposal that's being carried out by officers. The main issue is considered to be the permanent loss of the pub as a community facility in the context of the site being located in a village. It's acknowledged that this loss would be regrettable. However, officers afforded considerable weight to the case put forward by the applicant that the pub use is no longer viable as a business due to the low turnover figures when it was operating since the current owners took ownership in 1999. Other factors include limitations of it only having one floor, no kitchen and the amount of investment work that would be required to upgrade the existing building. The fact that it's only wet-led, with not currently a kitchen facility. And also there's a very wide range of public houses which are located in the nearby vicinity in locations such as Stanington, Locksley and Bradfield. Added to that, the proposal would deliver benefits, including providing two additional housing units at a time when the council does not have deliverable five-year housing land supply, as well as constituting the beneficial reuse of the existing building on a site that is classed to be previously developed. Furthermore, the use of the ground floor and outbuilding is considered to be compatible with the residential properties on either side and the flat that's already above it. In addition, it would take away a type of use that can sometimes be responsible for complaints from neighbouring residents about noise and disturbance. Overall, therefore, it's considered that the planning balance weighs in favour of the application being granted. Other notable parts of the proposal include it being deemed to be appropriate form of development of the green belt due to involving a conversion and minimal forms of new development. Furthermore, the proposal is considered to provide an acceptable standard of amenity for new and existing residents, taking into account the proposed amenity space and parking provisions. For all of those reasons combined, the office recommendation is one of approval. There's nothing to report by way of supplementary. So that concludes the office presentation. Hand back to the Chair at this point.
Thank you Andrew. We have just one speaker, which is Caroline McIntyre. It's five, it's going to be five minutes Caroline, will you start? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Caroline McIntyre. I'm the agent for this application. My clients are sad to be in the position where they have had to make this application. However, can truly say the family have tried their best to make a viable business out of the pub over the last 25 years. They bought the Royal in 1999, putting their savings into the business with the aim that it would provide David Senior with a less intense job. During the first 18 months, it became apparent that the turnover and figures presented in the sales process had been inflated. The turnover did not support the business, even though they worked hard to increase this. They invested in three letting bedrooms and improvements to the beer garden, which helped, but it still wasn't enough. David's son worked behind the bar through the day and David's wife Linda returned to work for the NHS. In 2001, David Senior returned to work as a builder, then worked in the pub 6pm until midnight. For 25 years, his son has drawn less than the national minimum wage, even though he was doing 70 to 80 hours per week in the pub. For 23 years, David and his wife Linda never took a wage and any additional money for wages went to limited outside help. The family threw themselves into the community, arranging various events for Easter, Halloween, Christmas parties and as part of the summer gala. And fundraising events were held for groups, including the school. However, footfall remained limited. They're now in the position where the pub needs rewiring, new plumbing and a new roof and significant further investment, which just isn't justified by the returns. The pub was historically wet-led and doesn't have its own kitchen. And food has been prepared in the kitchen of the adjacent cottage. Drinking habits have changed and there are other pubs in the area which meet, better meet modern expectations, including those with a full food offer and direct connection to outdoor space. The Royal closed its doors in 2024. There was some interest from a local brewery, but they couldn't make the business stack up and withdrew their offer. There isn't a viable business here for anyone. We do appreciate that many people hold the pub in their affections due to the Christmas carols, but this is a few days a year. They don't visit other times and other pubs in the areas have started doing similar events. The business can't stay open just for this one event. To summarise, we believe the proposals accord with the policy requirements. And whilst it's disappointing to see the pub close, the proposals would make good use of an existing building and deliver two new homes. Therefore, they ask that you support the application and approve this. My clients and I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Caroline. Andrew, anything?
Yeah, nothing to add. I think that obviously what I've heard there sort of supports a lot of our assessment findings that's already been set out within our report and within the summary that I've given. So yeah, not a lot further to add at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you Andrew. Members' questions? No? Members' comments? Andrew was, sorry, Eric was first, Andy second, Marion, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the applicant for all the work they've done trying to make the pub a success and say that I hear the objectors sorrow for the loss of a community venue and somewhere nice to go for a pint, but the council's not in the business of shatling people to one viable businesses. And it's going to be a lovely place to live up there. And in terms of biodiversity improvement, those gardens are going to be beautiful, a view like that. And so I'll be supporting it.
Good man.
Thank, thank Chair. I mean, I mean, I think the site visit was really useful yesterday. We just saw the, the setting of the pub and, you know, I think we could all imagine it, yeah, yeah, how it could have been, whether that was 40 years ago or 80 years ago, 120 years ago. But modern pub offers really challenging. I think, you know, we actually understand there was a, a community funded effort to try to keep it going and a brewery interest. You know, I think we know what the competition in the surrounding area is and I think the current occupants have done their best and I think we all regret losing any pub. And, you know, I've certainly been there and had a pie and a pint over the years, but not at the frequency that would keep, keep it open. And I think you just have to acknowledge that, that people are looking for destination pubs, they're looking for a bigger food offer and that's not appropriate. I think keeping the building and turning it into two homes, you know, I think that, that is, that is useful. So I think in these circumstances, it is, it is quite sad to, to lose a facility in the, you know, in a small village, but I think it's, it's inevitable. And I think, you know, I think we, I think the proposal's reasonable in terms of, you know, I guess they get, you know, putting two new houses on the market. So I think that's, that's helpful. So I'll be, I'll be backing the officers, I'll be supporting the officers' recommendation. Thank you Chair.
Marion?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, similar comments. It's obviously disappointing to lose the pub. Pubs can be really important community assets, but I think it's a case of use it or lose it. And if the business isn't viable, it's not for this planning committee to enforce that. So I'll be supporting the recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Tony?
Yes, thank you Chair. I concur with everything that everyone's said, being as I'm last to speak, it's all been said for me. Thank you very much.
Thanks Chair. I just wanted to say that, you know, I was a director of a community-run pub in Sheffield, the Gardener's Rest, for several years. I know the challenges that, that face people trying to make a success of, of these places. I know that it was a, a really great place for the Sheffield Carols every year, but, you know, we live in a world where, you know, people's recreational habits are changing and so regretfully I think that the building will need to be used for other purposes. The only one thing I was going to comment on, to do with the conditions actually, on the ecological conditions, that quite comprehensive list there, including bat bricks and hedgehog enclosures, which are great. It mentions built-in bird boxes. I wondered if we could possibly specify swift boxes or swift bricks there? I wondered if we could possibly specify swift boxes or swift bricks there, because, you know, as a red-listed bird which is rapidly declining, it would be nice to take an opportunity in a building like that to provide for accommodation for those birds in future. Thank you, Chair.
I'm going to ask Caroline, can we put some swift bricks in?
Yes, we're happy to agree to that. No problem at all.
Oh, make that, oh, make that a condition.
Chair, obviously, at the moment, you've got the applicant's consent, so, you know, on theory, you know, what's the harm? But I don't think we would necessarily say it would meet the six tests in terms of it being necessary. I think, obviously, we've got provision under the condition to provide for bird boxes, I believe. But, you know, you just had a directive to say that the committee would, you know, has noted that swift bricks are needed or, you know, are desired in the area. I can see Diana might want to, she probably has to deal with a similar question quite regularly. Thank you.
Sorry, Chair. I was just going to say that the emerging policy does make specific reference to swift bricks, so potentially we do have some justification for amending the condition.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
We would need to take a vote on that. We would need to take a vote to include this.
If you want to amend the condition, Chair, yeah, just need proposing and seconding, but, you know, you could just have, knowing the last item, you just took a vote at the end, which included the amended condition. Thank you.
Right, no further questions. Take a vote, wash your hands, and you'll also be voting for inclusion of swift bricks. Everyone. Thank you. That is passed. Thank you very much. We now move on to item nine, recorded planning field submissions and decisions. Noted, I think, Diane. Thank you, everyone. A bit earlier than we thought, so, thank you.